Because Facebook was not working. So I'm just doing it through you.
Meeting everyone, I'm gonna call this meeting to order. This is the meeting of the regular session of them. Mayor and council, city of Bisbee, County Coach Chase, state of Arizona, it's being held on Tuesday, April eighteenth, twenty twenty-three at seven oh one P M. In the council chambers. No call, please.
Councilmember one at a helm. Councilmember Johnny Camino, please. Councilmember Frank Davis.
Yeah.
Mayor Ken Budge.
Yeah.
Councilmember Jennifer Johns, excuse. Councilmember Mel Sully.
Yeah.
Mayor Pro Tim Anna Cornell.
Here.
City staff, even possible city manager, Ashley Coronado, city clerk, Perry Badger, finance directors, the wild lenders, personnel director, Matthew Burning. Logan Dodd, operations manager, Tim Cox, H two, Tim Rich, and fire chief.
Thank you, everyone. So tonight, for a moment of silence. Form some very sad news and one of our city employees lost their son a few days ago, and since it's not a big public yet, and I've been announced the name, but you could just give your thoughts towards one of our employees and what he's, he and his family are going through tonight. Using their son. That would be great, and so I'm gonna ask you to stand in a moment and decide something we say. Thank you, everyone. For my announcements tonight, I have a couple of things. First, gonna let the public know that we're trying out something new tonight. It's a new camera and sound system. We're hoping it comes out better, and so we'll see how it works when we look at it online the next day when they can download it. Okay. Give us a little tentacle chance here for us to work these bugs out, but I'm hoping in the end that we'll be able to use this system to get a little better sound and a little better view of our, our ongoings here. So with that, I do have one announcement. Heaven forbid, it's, I just can't believe it, another plaque that I get to give out. It's a another ten year award. And it gets off his phone, and I'm gonna make him look at me and realize it's actually him. Now, honestly, this is the plaque for city manager, actually good numbers. We don't get to count, I guess, his interim, but I do anyway, but, but it's actually longer than ten years, but I just need to begin my gratitude to Steve and, and all he's done for us over the ten years for our city, and I am very proud to be able to give this to him tonight. And thank him so much for all of it that he's done for our community and leading this city, so I'm, I'm gonna open it up for anybody else who would like to make a comment or two, and then pop over and make him shake my hand for ten thousand times.
Well, so I would just like to say it's a great work of your speech. You know, getting the city back on its feet. It's like we're making progress.
You know that this country grew totally that he was tired. And he would never have model retirement. Someone that can retire.
Do I get that permission? I don't.
It just seems like yesterday that we were interviewing for the first go-in. And been, been a hell of a life, that's for sure. He has two years, and I just, you know, I'm hoping that we're gonna give him a twenty year, that goes back to because things run so smooth when you're here. And you know how much I appreciate everything that you've done over the years from the very beginning to now. And even when the city called fire, when I was texting you pictures of the wee hours, what, thirty-four o'clock in the morning or whatever. Your concern then, and you were the only one that expressed concern, was, are the employees okay? And you continue from Winslow to do that, and that to me shows, you know, how much you are dedicated to the city and have been, even when you were elsewhere, you know, this is hard for you to think, this is where you're hurt. And ten years, like I said, I'm, I'm looking forward to when we give him the twenty years. I'm hoping that at some point, maybe, you know. But anyway, thank you for every, absolutely everything.
Well, I just want to say thank you. Good luck. What do you plan to do next? Thank you.
Nobody owes a bigger thank you than me. Ask him actually come out of retirement. I, I took over the mayorship, I just knew I needed somebody I, I could work with, I knew I could. And the seven years we spent together before. Just know that, I think we've done very well to this point, and I don't imagine it's gonna change, but anyway, there guys. Not much, but it's what everybody gets and you appreciate.
There we go.
Sir, if I could have a moment.
He betcha.
Well, first of all, not leaving till the end of the year. Okay, this, this doesn't say congratulations on your achievement. Ten years. And yeah, it's really been ten, five months, counting. Oh, and quite frankly, I did not intend, and I did not expect that two years. And five months. You're right, good. He's here to get you checked out, I'm sorry. Yeah, we spent a few years in Winslow, and it was a good ride. Up there, wonderful people, still have many good friends up there. I heard from, in fact, I got a call from the car chief up there today. He's gonna retire. And a couple of months ago, my finance director retired, so guard is changing up there as well. And what we chose Bisbee. I came from Ohio. I worked in Colorado, I worked here. This is home. So thank you.
All right. Here's Robert, we're gonna get back to business, and I think the business is is just always coming at us, and, and I know we have a good crew that's handling it, so moving forward, we're gonna do a no call to public, and so we're gonna do didn't have a sign, the sign up sheet, there was no but you can, don't come on up. Yes, sorry.
Hi, I'm Rachel Sky. I live at two oh six on K Street. Um, I'm here in Monica's patients, you know. I'm a tenant at her house right now. And she's probably explained to you guys a few times about the property issue on her K Street. And it's still going on. Monica did her best to be the best neighbors when she did build a parking space. We have used a couple of times, but when we passed, there's been issues with cars getting by because of the neighbors across. So I just, I don't know what you guys could do about it, but I know that Monica was kind of bullied out of the house, it feels displaced, so I just decided to kind of speak up. So thank you.
Sure, I'll turn this over. We have our police chief here and city manager here, and I'll maybe look further into this thing.
Okay, thank you.
Any one else that didn't sign? Okay. All right, moving on to general business, first order is number one, which is the accounts payable motion.
I move that the pay accounts payable in the amount of three hundred and fifteen thousand nine hundred and eighty-four dollars fifty-six cents, subject to availability of funds.
I'll say that.
We have a motion, second, and accounts payable, questions?
Just have one.
Okay, go ahead, Mel.
Page two. Personnel. And On Time Sports T-shirts Adventure Buena High School is two, four twenty-five, four twenty-five. What's that for?
Good evening, council. I was contacted by On Time Sports. They do support T-shirts for the local high schools, so they have T-shirts that they sell at the schools for, to support the athletics at those high schools, and they were selling bases on the back of the T-shirts, like an advertising space. And as a recruitment tool, I put together along with some help from the visitor center manager, and also Matt Gurney gave me an idea to use a hashtag. Because I'm old and I don't use them, but he said people sitting at a basketball game, looking at the back of the shirt, someone in front of them, and they see hashtag discover Bisbee and things of that nature. They would be inclined to, you know, look up at the city, so that says, it has the Bisbee logo, and it says work, play, live. Bisbee, Arizona, and it has our, the website for, to our employment page on the city website, and then phone number, and then, like I said, also notated hashtag discover Bisbee, and there is one other one that we use, and so those T-shirts will be sold for winter, spring, and fall sports, so each season they will sell those T-shirts. Most recently, I have even gotten another request for advertising from Douglas High School, but I haven't had the opportunity to look at that yet. So this was just a kind of unique new way I thought we could not just promote Bisbee for recruiting, but also being a wonderful place to
You have an image of that?
I don't, I didn't prepare. I have a T-shirt in my office, which I can definitely take a picture of, and maybe we can get that on the city website and Facebook page.
Was this budgeted, or you just, it's fair of a moment, this tourism or personnel, I mean, this is saying discover Bisbee, but yet it's personnel, it's under personnel.
Um, I have recruitment budget, so yes, I had funds in the recruitment budget. And again, I just worked with the visitor center manager, just to get ideas. I wanted to do something just kind of fresh and something that I don't see all the time. Again, trying to get people interested, you know, not just in Bisbee as a place to enjoy for the weekend or whatnot, but to live here, work here as well.
Okay, thank you.
Yes, along the same lines, I had the same question, and my other question is Valley Union and Buena, but why not?
I do not know if Bisbee High has contracted with this vendor to use T-shirts. I asked them, and they told me that Douglas was going through this, so I had not reached out yet to Buena, Buena, sorry, Bisbee High School to see if they're doing something of a sort, but at this time, these, the, this On Time Sports vendors who contacted me, and we, you know, went ahead and moved forward with the high schools that were available at that time.
But I mean, I'm all for advertising where I'm in, but I would like to see something vocal.
Absolutely, I will follow up on that.
Do you know how many T-shirts? It depends how many they sold.
I wouldn't know. I can get those numbers and see how many they print for each season of
Yes.
Anybody else? Any other questions? There was one that I caught that was mislabeled, but they now fixed it, was her sheet wrong for the senior center? Put into the wrong line, about seven hundred dollars. It's been directly, it's not on the sheet here, but okay, with that, we have a motion, the second, to approve accounts payable, amount of three hundred and fifteen thousand nine hundred and eighty-four dollars and fifty-six cents. All those in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Close may. During none of the eyes have it, so move. Moving on, item two, this is the consent agenda. We have one approval of the minutes, we have four new appointments, one to the airport advisory, two to the disability committee, which, just let everybody know, that fills up the disability committee, you have seven new members, which is, it's approved, and then one to the streets and infrastructure committee, and then we have two special liquor license, one for the Blake Foundation, and the Easter Seals at the park, and then approval for one at the Bisbee Hatchet House. If anybody has anything cool.
Not too much cool, but I just comment. What could go around that? That's, that's the only thing that keeps running through my mind.
Yeah, well, luckily, it's on private property, they don't, they don't have a permit. They don't put us down as a code. All right, any other? Without, I'll take a motion to approve the counts. The consent agenda as listed.
And we approve the consent agenda, items A through G.
Second.
Have a motion, second, to approve the consent agenda, items A through G. All those in favor, signify by saying aye, aye, close may. During none of the eyes have it. Moving to approved. Moving forward, not being in our old business this time, so moving on to new businesses, so item number three, which is the presentation of the annual designer review board report, and turn this over to our council ex officio.
Yes, I'd like to introduce Laurie, you know, and Peter Gaffer, who, Laurie is the chairperson of D R B, and Peter is just about to work there as well, on board. And I'd just like to say the people at the D R B work very hard, and so all of yours, the dedicated group, and the
Thank you, Mr. David.
Laurie, go ahead.
So we are not gonna go through this word for word to save you all a little bit of time tonight. But this is the report for the past year, twenty twenty-two, designer review board. This is not a very extremely, this is a light, easy to read, five-page document. It's in your packet from forty-six to fifty-one, I believe. And Mr. Gaffer is the author of the document, and he had the first support from the rest of the board in producing this, so I'm gonna turn it over to him. So maybe just kind of wait and go through what we have here.
Very good. Thank you, Frank. Yes. I'd like to stop by thanking stuff, particularly nine, who keeps us honest, because we're a discreet lot, and the number of times she's just kept us on straight from now on, because we are under scrutiny all the time, so as much as we can follow the rules, the better, and think that she is just extraordinary. This is, I don't know if this is the first annual report, it's required by city ordinance, which we, Laurie and I discussed, and we thought, oh, maybe we should do one, because it maybe generates some more discussion, makes us think about what we do. There, there was no template for the report. And I have no statistics, but if we keep on doing this, I think it could be useful in the future to sort of look back, I'll be doing more as the more applications are up, whatever. There is one correction, I think, I think it should be on the record that Benny reply is actually Ben Letley, I think, we have an over aggressive spell check. But otherwise, I think, I think it's all okay.
And, and
Maybe you liked it better.
Well, maybe, yeah. And you know what, I was writing a name out to Laurie, and the damn spell check, keep correcting. I think he has to change. Just, just go through the summary for the audience and for the record. We did review and consider a total of fifty-five applications. I don't know if that's more or less than in the past. Since COVID, we've actually kept pretty busy. Of these, fifty were approved. We only disapproved one, which makes it sound really nice people, but I think we're not so much nice as we try and be constructive, because there were quite a number of them, eighteen, where the motions wasn't a clean, yes, go ahead, do it, but there was a discussion, and we made modifications, and I think I think that's what we do when we work as a group, we do that pretty well, that's adding myself and the rest of the crew in the back, but I think that's important. So even though it looks like we just sort of, yeah, whitewashing, you know, pass everything, we don't. We do qualify it, and I think the applicants typically seem to welcome that. During the year, particular note, we're getting more and more roof mounted, welcome up, photo, well, take a raise, which I think, and we are gonna see more and more and more. Again, we try and, it's in the, it's in the ranks, it's allowed, and I think as a city, we probably encourage it, but also try and make them less conspicuous than others might be. We did welcome one completely new residence in the city, I don't think the brother ground, yeah, in the area, which was the site of the fire on Star Avenue a few years ago, so that's gonna come back, and I'm pleased to see that. We only had one demolition, that's always a tough call. We got through it. There is a summary of all the applications, it's in very summary form. Typically, there's a hundred and fifty to two hundred pages in each packet, so it took a little bit of distilling to get it down to one of the pages, but saves you a lot of reading, but the city does keep a record in the entire package. We do have a new application packet, which, which kicked in during the year, which we're looking at, asking for a little more clarity in the applications, which I think is important. The new guidelines were finally approved, and they kicked in as of the first of April. And we're looking forward to seeing yeah, I'm trying to keep this consistent, honest. I think that's about all I want to say, that we did have an executive session after a very contentious one, and that was, I think it was incredibly helpful, because, you know, with the helping making law, it's sometimes difficult to really let your head down, so I think we would probably be asking that for that. Otherwise, I don't know if you have any questions for Laurie and me, but answer it, yeah, I mean, always if you want next year as well. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Thank you. I have a couple of quick comments on, I did notice there was five that were tabled, so that's ten percent, so that meant that you wanted them to come back with more information or whatever, so even though you see a lot of approvals, you have to realizing you do your diligence, and if you don't know what is there, you're table it and ask them to come back or, or some other reason, so ten percent doesn't seem unusual there. As far as the guidelines, those have not been done for many years, and it was a, it was a monumental task, which neither took a big part of, but you guys brought it forward, and it went to P and Z, that language there for a couple, three months, I watched, and but it all got done, and that's the way government works, that everybody has a, has their, you know, chances, have their say into it, so I think with the new guidelines, with the new applications, and so on, I'm hoping that, that your job is not honest, because I know that's true, that it's easier, so. That's all right, okay, I appreciate your time. It's a every month thing, this isn't once every three months, this is a show up every month, so it's a, it's a real commitment, so, and then going out and looking at the project, so thank you very much for your report, and file that under very good. All right. Then we're gonna move on to another presentation. This one will be our annual report, audit report, that ended in June thirtieth. Very happy, I've read it, and I'm pretty happy with the results, but I'll let, hey, thank you. I'll let you official, official tell us how, how good we did, okay, thank you. Who wants to introduce, I guess? Denver Frank, is that right?
Yeah, that's right.
Okay, and just because whatever you have to tell us.
Well, so we have the presentation up here. Again, my name's Jennifer Frank, I'm a partner with Quinton Verdic. And we do your audit every year, and I try to do these presentations kind of quick, because I know you're busy. And I just have some highlights to point out, and then I will move on, so I'm gonna go to the first slide.
She don't read this, right?
It's a hundred and something, it's a fun.
Yeah.
So the first slide I'm gonna cover is the audit report, so that's usually what everybody cares about on, on the audit presentation, so the very first report you're gonna find in your financial statement is the independent auditors report. I'm happy to say that we issued a clean, unmodified opinion again this year. It's the very back of your financial statements, you'll have your report on compliance and on internal control over financial reporting. And no material weaknesses noted this year, no significant deficiencies, so that's excellent. And then the very last report is your HERF report, basically saying, are you spending your HEIR money in compliance with the statutes? And we had no findings noted there as well. All good. I'm going to go, and I threw this slide in here at Carrie this afternoon, so I'm happy she got it on there. There was just some unusual things this year that I wanted to know. So at, towards the end of twenty-two, you did the P S P R S bond refunding, which causes some fun things to happen in the financial statement this year. And so we did the refunding, we did a bond issue for twenty-one million six hundred and fifty thousand dollars. That was paid and remitted to P S P R S before year end. The problem there is P S P R S reports on a one-year lag. So the liability you see on the June twenty-two financials is for June twenty-one liability. There's no way for us to get around that, so basically what you're seeing is your debt pretty much doubled in twenty-two, that's gonna correct itself in twenty-three. So that was one. Um, so that was one thing that I wanted to point out. You'll see on the government wide statements on the, um, statement and net position, you will see the, there's a deferred outflow for pensions that I think is at twenty two million. That includes that payment that was made to PS PRS. So it's sitting in the asset section right now instead of reviewing that liability. So that was that. And then in the general fund, you will see the debt proceeds reported in other financing sources. And the payment, the payment to PS PRS is included with public safety expense, pension expense. So it's in that line item. So it's like that line item went up to like, I think, twenty five billion. But that's what, that's what threw that off. So I just wanted to point that out. I am going to go to the next slide, which is the government wide financial highlight, highlight. As you know, you have two sets of financials. You have your government wide statements, which are full of goals. They include all your uh, long-term assets and liabilities. You have your fund financial statements, which are a current resource focus. So they don't include those long-term assets and liabilities on the balance sheet. So the first one I'm going to go over at the government guide. So your total net position ended at a little over seven point five million dollars at the end of the year. That's always, and that's between your business type and your governmental activities. Um, that's a good number to watch. Over time, increases and decreases can kind of tell you the health of the city's finances. So for fiscal year, twenty two cities net position increased five point, almost five point nine million. Um, a lot of that is you got pension, you got capital assets. Those kinds of things go to the balance sheet and they don't get run through expense where you see them on the governmental funds. I'm going to go to the next slide, which is on capital assets and the long-term debt. For capital assets of the city, uh, total twenty nine million, a little bit over net of accumulated depreciation out of June thirty. Your long-term liabilities totaled just under fifty four million. Again, we have basically two pension amounts on there. Uh, the breakdown on that is one point seven million in those payable. We've got the bonds payable, which include that in PS PRS on at twenty eight million. Uh, leases of seventeen thousand. We've got the net pension liability at twenty three million and compensated allowances at a hundred and eighty three thousand. For more detail on those and the changes from last year to this year, those footnotes are on page forty two, forty three and forty four for the more detailed information. Okay, I'm going to go to the slides, which are my favorite, twenty five year trend. And the visual person, I like the trends. Um, so you will see this is on the general fund. So this is on the uh, current resource focus. This does not include any kind of long-term liabilities, long-term asset. So your total assets is the very top line. It ended at four point seven million. Your total, uh, fund balance, which is your equity ended at four point four million. And your, uh, total liabilities at bottom line was three hundred and eleven thousand. So the general fund continues to report a healthy fund balance, healthy asset trend, um, that a positive trend overall. For twenty two, the fund balance increased by five hundred and ninety eight thousand. The city have several years ago chose to commit that two point one million of those insurance proceeds for the rebuild of the city hall. Um, so that is in the fund balance. On to the cash trend. Pretty positive trends. Twenty twenty saw a little, uh, decrease, but still relatively comparable to twenty nineteen. Um, and we've been increasing since twenty twenty. So positive trends twenty twenty one and twenty two. No restricted cash balances reported there. The revenue and expenditure trend. So typically with governments, uh, governmental funds, governments don't have a profit motive. Um, so we expect to see those revenue and expense lines crisscross periodically. Uh, there will be years that you're accumulating resources for, say, a large capital project. Something along those lines. And then the next year you might be spending those down. So the trend here on, on the general fund is pretty much what we expect, um, or cumulatively, you know, to say that over the last five years in total, uh, revenue setting exceeded expenditures by a net of a hundred thousand. I'm excluding two items here. We have the insurance proceeds in two thousand and eighteen. I excluded those for, uh, some comparability between the years. And I also excluded the debt proceeds and the pension refund that occurred in twenty two, just so we have kind of some comparable later. So when you back those out, you had revenues of six, seven point six million and expenses a little over seven million. Okay, enterprise funds. So these are reported full of goals for all the debt and the liabilities that we have a lot of their own book. Um, typically we expect to see revenues exceeding expenses. And you have to account for a future capital outlay depreciation and those kind of items. So on the very first one, we are talking about the wastewater fund. Um, so in total, over the past five years, expenses have exceeded revenues by two point nine million. In this year of twenty two, um, expenses exceeded revenues by a little under three hundred thousand. So you're saying that those lines are coming closer together, um, which is positive. Um, I think the goal would be to get those to crisscross so that it's showing a revenue and that revenue. Onto the cash trend. Um, you'll see positive cash trend, um, for the wastewater fund. We ended the year at one point one million. Um, of that, the unrestricted cash was a little over a million. So there are certain cash balances that are restricted, um, for customer deposit, this kind of thing. Onto the sanitation fund. In total, over the past five years, revenues have exceeded expenses by eight hundred and fifty seven thousand. So that's positive. Uh, you'll see each year that revenues have exceeded expenses. And we are seeing that gap, um, increase over the last two years, uh, which is positive. In fiscal year twenty two, revenues exceeded expenses by two hundred and sixty six thousand. Um, the cash trend, um, for the last two years, it has recorded zero cash. What you'll want to look at there for kind of the detail on that is page twenty seven of your financial statements, how the cash flow statement. And you can kind of see there's debt payments. There's other things that are going through there. If I remember correctly, I think there was some paydown of some inter-fund, inter-fund loans on the cash to cover cash. Off to the clean line. Our revenue and expense trend. So in twenty twenty, when COVID was going, um, you know, hitting pretty hard, uh, we saw expenditures exceed revenues, which is kind of expected, um, given the industry. Uh, and you can see through twenty twenty two, we more than recouped. You'll see that your net income was two hundred and ninety five thousand for the year. Um, in total, over the past five years, revenues have exceeded, um, expense by five hundred and thirty six thousand. So positive trends on the line. And on the next one, you will see that she cash has increased three hundred and thirteen thousand. Been relatively stable between two thousand eighteen, two thousand twenty one. And then we've got that increase this last year. Does anyone have questions? I know it's so much fun. And if you're really bored, attention footnotes. I hope you have as much fun reading them as I'm writing them every year.
Actually, the reason there's no questions is because of such a great report. How we did it for a year or so.
Very well. I do want to, if I could, take the time to thank Carrie and the finance and Ashley and everybody and, and of course, even here, because I know that we drive them crazy during audit time.
Yeah, but you put yourself up in the lunchroom. So I'm, I think, I think that's.
Snacks and coffee.
I came and go, oh, geez, we're here. We don't have an office here.
And somebody else took that one over now. We may have to work out that.
Any, any questions here? Last shot.
It was all good. Thank you.
Okay. Thank you. All right. So, uh, moving onward, we are going to move to item five, this discussion of possible approval of an intergovernmental agreement between the city of Bisbee and southeastern Arizona government organization, better known as C E O, for paving services.
Thank you, Mayor. Good evening again. Um, this is a, um, a request for approval of governmental agreement, uh, between us and C E O to, um, provide paving services for their parking area. As you know, there is some requirements for paid parking. And C E O, uh, has been, uh, working on, uh, getting, uh, their stuff together so that they can get parking lot paid now that they've done, I guess, phase two with the aging office out complete. So, um, the, uh, since, um, C E O is a wayside government agency and we can't enter into go intergovernmental agreements with that. Um, we felt it was appropriate, uh, to do so. We had, uh, Randy and, uh, the city attorney, uh, collaborated to put together this, um, your governmental agreement, uh, for your approvals, like basically, um, they're going to pay for the material to get it paid. So, um, so I mean, that's it. And Randy, I use the executive directors here this evening. Uh, is there anything you want to add? Evening, Mayor, House members. I don't have a whole lot to add. Um, this effort saves the taxpayers' money. That should be favorable to everybody. It also eliminates us having to go through a lengthy procurement process to prepare contractors, go through the bidding process, et cetera. Uh, which, as you know, takes some time. And it does enable us to meet the city's parking requirements, as mentioned by Mr. Parkin. We did move out of the senior center. We put a modular office building on property at fourteen oh three highway ninety two over here. Um, the last item on the list is to pay the extra parking area because with the extra occupancy at that property, we didn't have enough pavement on the ground. So this accomplishes that as well. And, um, it doesn't just cover the city's costs. It covers also overhead. And my intention is to capture, to the extent finance is able to do it. Um, an overhead rate of, you know, there, there, it doesn't, you don't just, it doesn't even out hundred percent. You, you gotta have a little bit of overhead there to cover, for example, the city attorney's time reviewing it, staff's time reading the billings that we'll have to pay. Public Works time administratively, taking care of making sure that a lot of the labor hours and the time for that. So I wanted to make sure that, um, that all those things were covered and they are expressed in the center of government agreement were fully committed in doing that. Uh, covering any reasonable costs associated. Uh, so I'm happy to answer any other questions you may have. Uh, really appreciate. I know you hear complaints, um, the process of putting that building in there. I have never dealt with a municipal government that was so flexible. And, uh, Joe was absolutely fabulous. Holly was absolutely fabulous to work with. We didn't have any problems at all. And we understood each other perfectly all the way through. You, you get into this with presidents, your clients. You've got some really good building officials here. So I really appreciate that. Um, other than that, um, it's before you, uh, I appreciate you considering it and one or two more questions you might have.
Have any questions?
Would there be any cost, uh, this city will have to come up with, basically, this is. I mean, I don't see in numbers. I don't see figures.
Sure. The city will have to pay. I guess we're going to have to get the asphalt, okay, and he and if it's necessary for us to front that cost, we're happy to do that. Or it would be however you want. So yes, we'll have to have some.
So there'll be costs associated with this.
There'll be a cost only and we will reimburse that.
Okay.
We don't intend for this to cost the city anything possible. Thank you. Other questions?
You've quite a bit of work with C E O and as you know, take care of other road situations and so on. So, um, just, just another another way for two governmental agencies to work together. Just in all transparency, I just want to let everybody know that currently I'm on the executive board as the second vice president of C E O. So I'll be signing this. I don't think there's a conflict of interest because there's no, but I do want to express that as, uh, so in transparency, you know, that I'm signing intergovernmental agreement, uh, as a vice chair, second vice chair for C E O and mayor here. So with that, I'll entertain a motion if there's any other questions or comments.
I'm going to approve the intergovernmental agreement between the city of Bisbee and southeastern Arizona government organization, C E O, for paving services.
I second.
We have a motion and a second to move to approve the intergovernmental agreement with the city of Bisbee and C E O for paving services. All those in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Very none the ayes have it. So move. Thank you. And, uh, our last item will be discussion and a possible approval to allocate eight R P A funds to paint the exterior of the police station. Oh, that's right. Matt is on vacation.
Sure, you guys, yeah. Hi, uh, evening, Mayor Council. Um, that sums it up pretty much. We did some diligent spending when we put in senior center roof and the repairs that we needed. We have ninety five hundred dollars left and we'd like to allocate that to repaying the police station over there. So. He'll be in line with the most professional profession. I don't want to green it yet.
The blue, the blue line.
Is this going to be enough to cover?
Yes, it, it should. Um, I've already got some quotes, soft quotes, more or less. So we shouldn't have to put out a scope organ and be under ten thousand. Um, and the other thing is we've got some really talented guys in public works. So whatever we couldn't have a contract contractor handle, we could have our guys. But right now with what I've seen, it shouldn't be any kind of issue. We'll probably have a little change left after this.
Okay, sure. Okay. So this is kind of a little off topic, but if there is any left over. And we get station eight finished, I think when they painted station eighty two, then we paid for the front. That's all they did. They left everything else.
Um, well, you won't have enough money left over for this to do that. Okay.
But he said they have talented guys.
But their talent is not making itself a pay. It's plenty of pay. Um, but, um, we will, when we present budget next week uh, for you, we will give you an idea how much part of money remains. And, and what, uh, priorities are still on the list that haven't been completed yet. Cause it, it looks bigger than it is because we still, we've already contracted for HVAC systems for the library and two fire stations. Um, we haven't spent the money yet because it's a thirty five week time to get the stuff. Um, so, uh, it, it will be a lot less than it seems, but you will have choices uh, left. Uh, and we don't have to uh, spend all the money until I think it's twenty twenty five. It's the deadline for spending that I don't think lasts that long. Uh, there are some items left on our. There are some items left on our list that we will have plenty of time to review all that again. The answer is a definitely.
Okay, the technical question here. Matt or Logan here. We have that extra money. Could we have used this in the other places but this? Painting the police station would be a great idea, but we had some other problems that we spoke about in the last couple of weeks, for example. Is it possible to use this for the swimming pool? Why did we choose to do it for this? Other, we knew we had a bigger problem with the swimming pool.
Well, Mel, that's a great question, actually. You know, part of the reason we have a problem with the swimming pool we have. Because we didn't do the maintenance that we needed to. We've got a good police building and even that, you can assume there's some. Some things that have happened in there. We will have to spend a lot more money if we don't put a coat of paint on that now. And repair the cracks that we have, especially tomorrow's season seasons.
This is not, I'm not disputing that. I'd love to do it. It's not the issue about whether it's the police station or anything else. I'm just saying priorities. And since that money was available, couldn't we have used it? I mean, I have no objection to using it on this one, particularly the station. Why, why, why did we think about this when we had this big issue, the swimming pool, and that money needed to be spent on?
So what's the issue on the?
Wait, just so you know, sir.
Yes.
It's because I asked for it first.
So, so, so someone did not ask for it. So this is how.
All I can say is I asked for it from city manager and grouped it through our meetings and product before council. That's why.
Okay, so, so you. But you can ask for it, but we have to decide what, where it goes. No, this is, we have money that you are asking us to allocate.
Yeah, we're handling pool. I would be happy. In fact, I did send you a parks committee update that gave you the most updated information about the pool today. Before I left the office, as far as the status of where it is with engineering or whatnot. Steve, are we in a risk of not being able to get the pool open from everything you've seen so far?
So far, I think we can open it up this year unless the only hangup is possibility of the pump. Not being able to deliver. We absolutely positively have to buy a new pump. We have money to buy the new pump.
Okay.
Okay, so that will be the difference between opening and not opening. We'll be able to get delivery.
Okay, so, so we're taking care of this?
Absolutely.
Okay, that's the problem, Mel, is we haven't taken care of some of our assets and now we're having, thank God, we got ARPA money. Okay, I mean, I feel like the little Dutch boy holding my finger in the dark, honestly. Some of the things. So we gotta start taking care of our buildings and stuff and not just the pool. The pool's extremely important, but. I don't want to have to look for money for a new police station with roof flaps on, too.
We're actually very. Well, you know, Logan, that's fine. And I respect what the chief, he was smart enough to ask for the money. Now you're telling me, he said, he said, he keep and he said, I told him. They asked for it. So it wasn't something that we, you said you had a plan.
So you know, we get asked all the time. We're trying to use, that's barely. We're trying to evaluate the priorities as far as what needs to be taken care of, what can be taken care of, so that it's not gonna become a bigger issue later on. So a lot of it is.
You determine where the money goes, maybe this would be the answer, based on priorities of what needs it the most. And. That was the next one on the, on the priority list, the way I saw it.
Well, to be honest, it was coming out and like, yeah, I think we'll come together and go, yeah, you know what, looking at this. It does need some attention. I mean, we've, we've got that big spot right there where we have the hole, right? But that's what really brought it to our attention is.
Logan, I have no objection. You have to understand, you have to, the question. If this was such an urgent, was such needed, why did not we plan for it when we budgeted last year? Apparently, this is a big problem. And now all of a sudden. The police chief, I respect him, he went and he did what he wants to do for his police station. I have no objection with him. But you're saying, oh, but this is needed. And now all of a sudden, oh, thank God, we have the ARPA money and now we can do it. So we're the planning here, right?
Well, I mean, I don't know. We've said it was a big problem now.
A lot of that's on me.
I mean, if you're answering, I hope you have your answer. I know you said your opinion, but. That will bring me to a motion to approve this money to paint the police station.
I move that we allocate ARPA funds to paint the exterior of the police station.
We have a motion, a second. To. Spend money for the art, money for the police station painting job. I was. It's over five thousand. I think we should have a, we'll call it.
House member Jacomino. House member Davis.
Aye.
House member Sweeney.
Name.
Mayor Prochem Klein.
Aye.
Mayor Bud.
Aye. Motion passes six one. So moved. Moving on, the last item is the city manager report. All right, no report from the city manager. With that, I think we've concluded our agenda.
Motion to adjourn.
Second.
A motion to second to adjourn. All those in favor, signify by saying aye. Close name. During none, the ayes have it. So move, we are adjourned. Thank you, everybody.